Hi, it's Brendan from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, our goal as a family-owned company has been simple, to give our neighbors on the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick the perfect appliances for your home. At Crane Appliance, we know how difficult appliance shopping can be. Our team is here for you. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Our email address is carsonprinting@al.com. Carlson Printing, for all your printing needs. John's Liquor Store, 729 Main Street, Falmouth, 508-548-2287.
And welcome to the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, February 10th, 2025, and it is exactly 6:30. I would ask you to please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I would ask that you please silence your cellphones and double-check that they are indeed silenced, and notify me as the Chair if you are making a video or audio recording of this open, thank you, of this open session. Okay, we're going to start with a proclamation. Mr. Brown?
Proclamation recognizing the Planning Board. Whereas Article 17 of the special town meeting of May 28, 1923, voted to appoint a committee of 12 to be known as the Planning Board, since more than 30 articles were proposed requesting roads and water main extensions by the town. Whereas the Falmouth Annual Report for 1924 states that a planning board was appointed by the Town Board of Selectmen with 12 members named L.C. Weeks, Chairman, Francis P. Stevens, Secretary, Joseph P. Miskel, H.H. Smythe, H.V. Lawrence for three-year terms, William B. Dillingham, Martha M. Boyce, A.G. Hadon, C.B. Fisher for two-year terms, and Harriet N. Veder, E.E. Kelly, and John H. Head to one-year terms. Whereas on October 16th, 1924, Dr. Louis C. Weeks, Chair of the Town Planning Board, attended a conference of the Federation of Planning Boards of Massachusetts and noted that Falmouth was one of four towns in the state that had appointed a planning board. Whereas the initial work of the planning board was confined to the preparation of a zoning bylaw to preserve the characteristic of the town, and the Falmouth enterprise argued that zoning fosters a wholesome neighborhood spirit and greater civic pride. Whereas the zoning bylaw was amended at annual and special meetings with lengthy debate over two nights and on April 20th, 1926, accepted by a vote of 188 to 122. Whereas the Town of Falmouth was the first town on Cape Cod to adopt a zoning bylaw, and whereas the annual report for the year ending December 31st, 1927, states that the planning board has considered all questions within its field relating to roads, building, public lands, et cetera, and has been represented at all state and county conferences. Now therefore, we, Nancy Robbins-Taylor, Edwin P. Zalinski II, Douglas C. Brown, Robert P. Muscoli, and Heather M. H. Goldstone, as a select board of the Town of Falmouth, by the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim the 100th anniversary of the Falmouth Planning Board. It witnessed thereof, we have hereunto set our hand of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed this day, 10th of February, 2025.
I think we have the Chair of the Planning Board here to accept the proclamation. Chairman, the rest of the board, I want to thank you for taking this proclamation seriously. I want to thank Paul Dryer, who's the historian for our board, for finding this information and bringing it to the attention of the town. I'm not too sure, AV-wise, whether or not it was heard. Do you think that it was?
I know it's heard on TV. I hope you could hear me here.
Yeah, there's actually no connection between what you hear in the room and what they hear on the broadcast. Two different systems.
That's good to hear. So, thank you very much for giving it your attention, and I think it's a real good marker for the town.
Can I pause a second? Can I pause a question? I didn't know I was going to be a historian.
Thank you.
I'll, Louis, I'll ask you another time.
Okay, we're going to move into recognitions. Any recognitions from the board?
I have one, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Muscoli?
I just would like to publicly recognize the work that was done by the Plastic Reduction Advisory Committee, which recently finished up their work and sent some proposed regulations to the Board of Health. As I think we all remember, this came about as a result of a failed article vote at the April 2023 town meeting with respect to plastic reduction. And I just think it's an example of how a community and a committee can get out ahead of things, bring in stakeholders, and do the work. They've worked for about a year and a half on these regulations, brought in the public, the restaurateurs, other interested people, and I think it's just a really good example of what can happen when there's that type of input. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muscoli. Other recognitions? Okay, we'll move on to announcements. Any announcements from the board?
Just again, I know we're going to, I know we're going to be speaking a little later on about the Pocasset closing, but I will mention that Representative Vieira and State Senator Fernandez are holding a meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM on, yeah, tomorrow, 2:11, 6:00 PM, at the Pocasset Village Association Hall and Barlow's Landing Road on the issue of the closure of the Pocasset facility.
Thank you. Mr. Muscoli, Ms. Goldstone?
Yeah, I would just like to remind the community that we have a lot of opportunities to get involved with town governance. Virtually every committee to which I am a liaison currently has openings on those committees. They're all fabulous groups of people to work with, working really hard to do great things in town, and so for anyone who's looking to get more involved, take a look at the openings on town committees, and please do step up.
Great, thank you. Mr. Brown?
I noticed that the Cape Light Compact has a new solar loan program, 2.75% interest for putting solar on your home, and that could be helpful to a lot of folks.
And where could they get more information?
Cape Light Compact?
Thank you.
They have a website.
Okay, great. Anything else from the board? Okay, we'll move into public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? Okay, we'll move on. Business number one, report from the 250th Anniversary Task Force, and we have Paul Dryer to present to the board.
I'm going to the presentation, but you might have to go.
Welcome.
It was just done. Yeah. Thank you.
Sorry, I'll just.
Madam Chair, thank you very much for the opportunity to do this. This is a very brief summary of the events of the Falmouth 250th.
Don't forget to tell us who you are, even though we know.
Yes, please. I'll just introduce yourself, so people at home.
Thank you.
You are?
The intent of this brief presentation is to give a brief update on the Falmouth 250 activities for the period ending December 31st, 2024. The organization was established by your board on August 12th, 2024. You interviewed several members, and they were appointed. They're listed on the list here, I won't go through them. They're all very qualified, long-term residents, some having experience going back to the bicentennial that was done 50 years ago. In addition, Mr. Muscoli was named Select Board Liaison, and the group has met eight times before the end of the year, so we're pretty active trying to do a number of things. The proposed general activities, fuck, fuck, is some general activities. Develop a comprehensive plan for the celebration. Coordinate Falmouth Historical Society, because they're doing a lot of work on this subject as well. Participate with the school district, because the educational aspect is very important to the committee. Coordinate and support the town, other events in other towns who are doing similar things. Look for potential funding sources to be able to do these things, and provide a summary report as required by the town manager. The specific activities we're trying to do include coordinate with the museums on the Green. They have proposed their revolutionary lanterns and lyrics for April 27th, and we're supporting that as a kickoff event, and it will, the intent is to have it on the library lawn. We were trying to do it on the Village Green, but DPW is beginning some serious work replacing electrical lines and flagpole and everything else, so we've agreed to move to accommodate DPW. Looking at a granite stone monument, small monument, DPW has provided something, and so we're working on that as a monument to recognize the Battle of Falmouth in April 2nd, 1779. Consider banners on Main Street with a maximum of 10 poles. We haven't designed this yet, we need to come back to you and see if you would permit that to happen. I don't know if you have a policy, I heard you were developing one, but we need to work with you to make sure that you're in agreement with that. We'll work with the school district, they're very excited about doing different things. They had students participate in the Christmas parade with the students carrying the banner for the 250th, so we provided some information to them, and they're going through their procedures and so forth, and seeing what they can do as part of the 250th, but they're very, very excited about that. And we're looking for funding for two items at this time out of fiscal 2025. We've requested a consideration for the April Town Meeting of $6,600. There'll be other activities coming on, but we intend to request that for the fiscal year 2026. I'd be pleased to take any questions. Thank you.
Questions from the board. Mr. Brown, you had a question.
I was going to ask a different question about the planning board history. I just heard that you were a historian for the planning board, and I wonder, I have heard in the past that the Falmouth Heights was potentially the, possibly the first planned residential community in the United States. Have you ever heard that?
Yes, I believe that is. That circular area up there was one of the first planned communities. I did not mention that, but the Historical Society, Historical Commission, excuse me, was trying to get that, recognize that historical area, and I think there were some concerns there, because people felt it would be restrictive in what they might want to do in their area, but that's true.
Yeah, interesting.
But we're going back before that.
Yeah, okay.
Hundred years, and I appreciate the proclamation, and thank you.
Yeah, I got a different question about this. Since you just mentioned the April 27th, 2025 conflicting with the DPW's work, is there any chance you might consider pushing your date off a little bit, maybe a little into the summer?
Well, we talked to DPW about that, we talked to Mr. McConity, and, you know, the work they're doing is pretty dependent on the weather. If they dig up the grass, it'll be dug up most of the summer, and if we have a group of people that have an event, we're not really going to help them do their work. So the options were to change a date, change the venue, or get DPW to change their schedule. And they recommended that we look at changing the venue.
Yeah.
So the intent is to move it to library lawn. We need to go through that process yet, we haven't done that yet, but, excuse me, I think that'll work very well. But to dig up that area, they have to replace all the electrical lines for all the events that they do there, and replace the pole, and a number of other things that we were not aware of when we started.
Okay.
But we're trying to cooperate with them very closely.
Got it.
Ms. Goldstone?
Yeah, I have a question about the planned plaque.
Yes.
You've got it here as Falmouth Heights. I noticed in the version we got in our packet, it said Surf Drive or Falmouth Heights, and I was, so I'm just curious where the location is, and if that location has historical significance for the Battle of Falmouth.
Well, one of the things we did, Peter McConity noted that DPW does have a number of granite blocks that they use elsewhere. So he offered those granite blocks, a group from our committee went out, looked at a block, picked one, and actually moved it up to DPW. The location was a question. We wanted to put it where the actual Battle of Falmouth occurred, along Surf Drive, but we're facing sea level rise, and it doesn't make a lot of sense. We looked at the parking lot near where the Old Stone Dock is, but that's even more vulnerable. So, we looked at perhaps the Village Green for the same reason that we have an issue there, and Cameron Aldo picked out an area where the steps are going down from Falmouth Heights to the beach. Now, that is not exactly where the battle was, but it's a very safe, permanent place where people can enjoy it while going down the steps. So we're trying to accommodate everyone with that. Okay?
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Dryer. We look forward to your next steps.
Well, I want to thank Tom Angier, because he's the one who pushed this thing along and got you to accept it, so we appreciate his input here, and we're working closely with him as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move into presentation of the petition articles for the April 2025 Annual Town Meeting, and we'll start with the presentation of Article 16.
My name is Earl Barnhart, Precinct 8. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I would like your permission to use the 10 minutes for both Articles 16 and 17 in one presentation.
Certainly.
I represent many Cape Cod citizens who are seeing water pollution continue to worsen in the groundwater, freshwater ponds, and coastal estuaries. This increasing water pollution is due to nitrogen in urine that enters wastewater in every flush toilet in every home on the Cape. Eighty percent of the nitrogen in wastewater originates in urine of the residents, but that urine is only 1% of the volume of the wastewater. We think that the fastest, most affordable solution to water pollution is to stop urine from entering the groundwater by diverting it, transporting it away, treating it to make it safe to use as fertilizer, and recycling it back to agriculture. Our goal is to see a wide range of urine diverting methods approved for use by residents who choose to use them. In progress reports, in November, the town and Maztec predicted that the planning for a pilot project would probably be completed in time to request funding for the project at Spring Town Meeting. We had not heard anything by early January about this, and the deadline for petition articles appeared, so we submitted two articles to further facilitate progress on urine diversion planning. We have been following the town's Water Quality Management Committee planning activities for many years. For many years, we have requested that the committee facilitate ways for residents to use a wide range of urine diversion methods and fixtures, many of which have been developed and used successfully in other parts of the world, notably Europe. Unfortunately, the committee is currently focused solely on the goal of getting MasDEP to qualify urine diversion to be classified as an IA technology for nitrogen credits in the town's wastewater plans. The committee hopes that if urine diversion becomes a MasDEP-approved IA technology, the town might allow residents to use it as an alternative option to 50,000 to 80,000 IA septic systems soon to be mandated in town watershed plans. One problem is that MasDEP is proposing a very narrow set of conditions of what would constitute acceptable urine diversion. MasDEP seems to have lost track of the fundamental goals of diverting urine from groundwater, and instead has become fixated on the requirement that the pilot project only use fixtures that collect urine that can be measured. For example, it is not, Maztec is not considering several types of fixtures that divert urine without collecting it. There are two examples: composting toilets that divert urine by incorporating it into the compost; incinerating toilets that divert urine by burning the waste to a small amount of ashes. The nitrogen is vaporized into the air. We propose that the pilot project should include these two types of fixtures in the study. Both types of fixtures are currently permitted by right by MasDEP. They are already approved by the Mas Plumbing Board. A second problem is that public presentations of town wastewater plans now compare only two options: sewers and IA septic systems. No estimated cost is presented of urine diversion for comparison as another alternative, and the Water Quality Management Committee is not currently pursuing, supporting, or encouraging other urine diversion methods that are not part of the MasDEP pilot project, even though if they were adopted, they would remove nitrogen from watersheds and reduce water pollution. Article 16 asks the town to fund an assessment study to determine the average cost to install urine diversion technology in a home by surveying 50 homes and estimating the cost of installing a range of possible urine diverting fixtures and equipment, not just the narrow option currently planned in the pilot project. MasDEP does not seem open to the idea that residents could choose to divert part, but not all, of the urine from their house, and do it voluntarily to the degree they choose. There are many ways to do urine diversion, some temporary and inexpensive, others involving permanent changes to the home and landscape. We want to get estimates for costs of many methods of urine diversion in anticipation that many methods and options will become available and permitted outside the pilot project framework. This information is not being pursued by either the Water Quality Managed Committee or by planning tasks being done by Maztec. Article 16 proposes to conduct only a paper assessment of estimated costs. It is not proposed to fund any actual installations of equipment. Article 17, the town understandably hesitates to commit funds to a pilot project that requires large investment in permanent installations of bathroom fixtures, structural changes in homes, and permanent buried urine storage containers, just to find out how much urine might be diverted from a home. Article 17 proposes to show the effectiveness of urine diversion using inexpensive, temporary fixtures to avoid the legal problems of using municipal funds for permanent improvement to a property. The idea is to use portable unisex urinals and temporary above-ground urine storage containers, and have the collected urine removed from properties by a licensed service to an approved disposal facility. This strategy has been described by one of Maztec's expert technical consultants as an affordable analog of a permanent urine diversion installation. To know the actual pounds of nitrogen in wastewater produced on a property, two things need to be measured: the volume of wastewater from the home, and the concentration of nitrogen and phosphorus in the effluent. The concentration alone does not accurately indicate the actual pounds removed. IA septic systems are incorrectly judged and compared solely by the nutrient concentration of the effluent. Article 17 would measure with water meters the volume of septic tank effluent and the effluent nitrogen and phosphorus concentrations. Together, these measurements would provide information of the actual pounds of nitrogen remaining in the residential wastewater. This information could be compared to effluent volumes and nutrient concentrations of IA septic systems to compare the nitrogen removal effectiveness of urine diversion to IAs. We petitioners believe that the town should aggressively pursue urine diversion as a preferred, best-available, cost-effective, environmentally sound technology in its wastewater planning and funding. Falmouth's current timeline for wastewater planning does not mention or include urine diversion, or show Falmouth's planned three-to-four-year, 50-home urine diverting project in the timeline. The urine diversion project may not produce final approval by MasDEP for five, six, or seven years from now. The timeline for conventional technologies implies that it will be at least seven years before actual implementation of any watershed restoration action. Meanwhile, water quality in all of Falmouth's waters will continue to deteriorate during those years. Urine diversion is a relatively simple, affordable, alternative technology that could advance progress in nitrogen control and pollution reduction much quicker. Getting accurate performance data and cost estimates for urine diversion as soon as possible could greatly reduce the costs of future watershed plans and would speed implementation of nitrogen removal. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So, when I look at Articles 16 and 17, Article 16 has 50 homes, and Article 17 has 30 homes, correct? So, 50 is, you said, is just a paper survey, am I correct?
Yes. Some consultant would look at 50 homes and estimate what it would cost to put different kinds of urine diverting fixtures in that home.
Okay, so you sort of answered that question. On 17, it says 30 homes. Now, and that's to using portable unisex features and storage containers. 30 seemed like a funny number to me. I thought it had to be 50 for DEP. Am I correct?
Well, this is not for DEP.
Okay, but to study it, they don't need a sample of 50 homes?
We're not doing this for DEP.
Okay.
DEP does have a 50-home number that they use for provisional and IA studies. We're not doing this for the DEP.
So, if I may, what is your purpose in doing it?
We would like to demonstrate how much urine can be diverted from a home using simple, inexpensive, portable fixtures that are not investments in the property to show a year's worth of removal. The work Green Center has done in the fall was two months. We did two months of the same kind of study, and we extrapolated to a year, and people said, "Well, you know, during the summer, some people go away, some people go to Florida in the winter, how about a year?" So this is to do it for a year instead of two months.
And this is for, this, Article 17 is for new, new testing, correct? For the 30 homes? This hasn't been done before through the Green Center?
It would be for whoever would volunteer to do it.
Okay, so this is new testing, that's my point. Okay.
And it also includes all the requirements that the UD pilot project of Falmouth has, so the testing before, the testing after, the water meter installation, all the requirements that are described for the big, longer project will be in there, but it's only for one year. There's no expensive fixtures to be changed in your house, so that if we can get data that otherwise would take five, four, five, six, seven years, we can get some data that would be kind of ahead of the big projects, so we have some inclination of what the potential is of urine diversion. Right now, it looks like we have to wait four, five, six years.
Okay, so, but we couldn't use that as data for DEP because it's less than their sample size, correct?
Well, we, we hope that DEP would see that information and consider it in their plans and in their approvals of what they would allow in homes.
The 50 is only based really originally on the IA systems, and IAs are very complex systems with lots of technology and machines, so that's why they needed 50 to make sure systems with lots of technology and machines, so that's why they needed 50 to make sure that for a long time these would work. This is a very, very simple one, and we could make it 20 houses, we could make it 40 houses. We had 40 houses and the last time we got 40 people to participate. If we get 50, great, but I think we get a lot of data with a smaller number of, we only want the data with a smaller number. And according to what we learned also from George Horfeather, we'll get the data pretty quickly because in the last study, it's, the effluent changes pretty rapidly and then it stays pretty stable. So that's what we want to find out for a longer term and see if we get all these data. And that would help the bigger projects too.
You go forward. And can you, can you speak to the status of the patent application that was filed in July of 2023 for the urine diversion device?
Yep, it's still, it's still in process. We are waiting, all the paperwork is done, and it's now just a bureaucracy on the government's side to get the final word on that.
Okay, so it's pending?
It's pending, yep.
Let me, can I just go to my next question?
Sure.
So is the funding that is requested in Article 16 and 17, now, is that intended to be used for testing the device for which you seek a patent?
No.
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 So that device, that piece in, in this patent is not included in your?
No.
In the system?
Article 17 proposes to use what are called QBs, portable unisex urinals invented by the Rich Earth Institute in Bradwell, Vermont, in homes voluntarily and to be stored in containers above the ground that George Horfeather and the Health Board has approved in the past, and that's it. Those are the fixtures to be used.
But if any big project, if we were to, if we were to do something like this, I'm just curious if your device would be used in, if you did 100 homes?
If it was available, it would be, it could be. It's up to the people. You could also buy commercially available waterless urinals right now, but they are very big and cumbersome to maintain. It's up to the people, but we would initially say use the QB because that was really effective last time. It's very inexpensive, it can be done quickly so that we have the data we want for a year.
Also, it's not installed in any permanent way. There was concern that you're not allowed to use municipal funds to improve a property. This would be equipment that'd be loaned to the homeowner and removed again.
Go ahead.
Maybe I'm missing something. So, so explain to me how we're not using public funds. This is going to be proprietary to, to you guys, whoever's applying for the, who's applying for the, the patent?
The patent has nothing to do with either of these articles.
Where's the patent come from?
Oh, you just handed us this.
I, I have a copy of the patent.
Didn't you get?
No, this was filed by them.
Right.
Right, but they didn't give it to them.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
No, I never, I never knew that there was a patent or anything that was applied for, for any urine diversion by Hilda and Earl. And then as I searched this weekend, I found it and I thought, okay, that's, it's interesting because I don't think we've ever heard.
Well.
Well, I didn't because I went to the tour.
Your device is a permanent, and what you're talking about.
The fixture that you're mentioning, it was patented by us, and we think it is the best long-term solution for Cape Cod to divert urine in an affordable, acceptable manner. It is not produced yet, it is not manufactured yet, it is patent pending. We will produce it as soon as we get funding to produce it, and we would use it for anybody who wanted to use it that could get the okay from the Mass Plumbing Board.
That's private funding you're talking about?
Oh, yeah. We have, we have private funding.
I just want to get that on the record for the.
And if we get the funding for it, we will give away 200 of them because the funding for the first production is always for an X number that they decide to do. And if that happens, if we get all the funding, then we would have 200 available if people want to install them, fine. But right now, for this project, we don't intend to have anything permanent. We intend to have just temporary systems that would indicate what a permanent installation could look like in the data.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, did you say you were aware of the patent?
I was. Well, not specifically the patent itself, but I was aware that they had a product which has been part of their tour, when you do the tour of the Green Center.
Was town management aware of that? Did we?
It's a private thing.
No, ma'am, I'm sure I had not seen the patent.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Yes, you, you mentioned that the, it would be the QBs that are temporary installations for this, that the town would be purchasing and they would then be removed. What would happen to them after the?
They would belong to the town. The town could decide what to do with them.
And there's lots of like Vermont, Sells, a lot of places want, want them, a lot of people want them anyway, but that was initial. A lot of people that we know that want to proceed because they're concerned about water quality and they want to do something quickly, they want to buy them, they're willing to buy them. But for this particular petition articles, we put all the cost in. But we have heard of many people said, you know, we, we can afford $80 for, for a QB. We can afford to help out with the, with any of the sampling, whatever needs to be. But for this particular petition articles, we put all the cost in there so that we knew what it would cost if the town took care of all of it.
Thank you very much.
I have one question.
Oh, go ahead. We're way over time with them.
I find that this is an interesting idea, Article 17, to get some data. I'm afraid it probably will be data that won't really meet DEP's needs, but I'd be interested to see what it could be. But I don't know about the idea of buying the QBs. I'm all for being a supportive partner, but I don't know if it's.
Well, we can leave that item out. People are willing to buy $80 of the QB, but all the testing, we want to do exactly the way it's supposed to do before, four times during the year, get the water meters in so that everything else in the project is exactly like the big project would be and it would be kind of ahead and parallel with the data and would be very helpful to give us an indication of how worthwhile could this be.
And I would just like to clarify one more thing before we go is, I hope you realize that we are working to try to get this urine diversion pilot program, and we have a very concise report in our select board packet. I don't know if you've seen that.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yes. Later in this meeting, you're going to get a report from the town manager that describes the barriers and the issues. It includes things like having six or seven revision meetings with the DEP as you gradually improve this thing.
You don't have to go through it all. We're going to hear it.
Yeah, we're, we're going to wait.
Just want to make sure you were aware of what we have.
Yeah, we read the whole thing.
Okay, very good.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't want to have that stalled at all. We want to push that ahead, but we're afraid it takes so long that we would like to have data earlier because people are so eager to do something.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Petition article number 18. Mr. Crane?
Thank you, Madam Chair and the Board. My name's Tom Crane, Precinct 1. Mr. Zelinski, it's good to see you back. I hope you're on the road to full recovery.
Thank you.
Rather than make a formal presentation of what the article says, I think it's pretty straightforward, I'd like to review the process of how we got here. So on December 17th, some community, Woods Hole community representatives met with Chief Leary, Lurie, and his senior staff. They're very generous.
Folks, we need to be able to listen to the next presenter. Go ahead, Mr. Crane.
And gave us an hour of our time, and during that meeting, we hatched the idea, I remember if it was my idea or Chief Lurie's idea, that, you know, maybe we could fund something on sort of a trial basis for the village of Woods Hole using overtime staff. You know, they got their calculator out and determined what the cost would be, and that's, that's in the article. And, you know, in the final analysis, I, I hope we can have more permanent staff, but I think given the police funding, this is the most reasonable way to go on that. So that was a very supportive meeting. Almost immediately after that, Christmas week, our town manager, Mr. Renshaw, and Mr. Johnson Staub got together a meeting where we could go over that. Chief Lurie again came. Town manager's office were very supportive of that. People from the Bike Ways and Pedestrian Committee were there, a member of the Health Board was there. As far as the Health Board, I think they're on board with this. You know, I haven't heard a formal statement, so I don't want to speak for them, but I know the Pedestrian and Bicycle Committee is supportive of this article. During that meeting, I suggested to Mr. Johnson Staub that, you know, maybe he could extend the, me the courtesy of running it by Town Council and make sure it was a properly, proper language in the committee. He did that. There were some minor tweaking, which I was more than willing to make, and that's pretty much how we got there, here.
Questions or comments about Article 18? Mr. Muscally?
Question for Mr. Johnson Staub. The, the current use of that embarkation fund, is, am I correct that it goes to the police department? Some monies come from that, go to the police department, but not specifically earmarked for any particular project or something definite? Is that correct?
That's correct. There's an allocation from that fund for the police department, the fire department, and marine environmental services. The allocation is a very small portion of each of those respective budgets, and it's in recognition of the impacts on all of those departments that the waterfront has.
Do we have a, are you able to tell us tonight how much is in that fund at this time?
I believe it's, it's over $1 million. I don't want to quote exactly because I don't remember exactly, but it, there's a balance of over $1 million, and I believe we are receiving in annually in the neighborhood of $400,000 a year.
Am I correct also, is there something up at the state legislature to increase the embarkation, triple it, I think?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions, comments?
Just one. Oh.
Oh, I was just going to comment that I think it'd be great to have police presence down at Woods Hole. That's a pretty dangerous such, situation we have there in Steamship Authority parking lot, especially with all the construction going on and so forth, so I'd be very supportive.
Yeah, just one minor comment, really along those lines. I think the, presumably this will get funded. I look forward to your support on this, but I think the police officers who are down there are going to need some guidance. It's a real mess down there. Mr. Brown just articulated that. I could go on and on. You've probably heard about it, but you know, just what he's going to do, I mean, for example, so when Steamship Authority buses go in the opposite lane, is that going to be allowed? Yeah, that's just one of many, many questions. I think that person is going to need some guidance and plan to work with the chief on that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Okay. Petition article number 19, prohibition of sale and release of balloons. Welcome.
Are there some slides that were sent to Ms. Davidson? Good evening. My name's Chris McGuire, Precinct 1. I'm here as the representative of this petition, but the actual petitioner, besides me being the person of record, is my daughter, Fay McGuire, and with your permission, I'd like to turn this presentation over to her.
Okay.
And she's got some slides. Thank you.
Do we receive the slides? Were they in our packet?
They were placed in the packet, no.
I don't remember.
It's just a computer.
Okay, welcome, Fay.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Fay McGuire and I'm a junior at Falmouth Academy. I became interested in this initiative because I grew up on the waters and on the beaches of Falmouth, and like many of you, I'm always picking up balloons and plastic trash. I recognize that environmental stewardship, especially by my generation, is imperative for Falmouth and the earth. Okay. So just before I get started, just some definitions. I, to clear things up, because I know on your little sheets, it says I'm banning balloons, I am banning lighter-than-air balloons, so regular balloons are just fine by me. So lighter-than-air balloons, any type of balloon sold inflated with a gas like helium, these can be mylar, latex, or plastic. Helium is one of the noble gases. It's a non-renewable imported gas that's lighter than air. And when I say release, I'm talking accidentally or intentionally. So toddlers versus like tributes. And then before I get there, balloons, I'm just saying balloons are not inherently bad, just that balloons filled with helium are hard to control. So everyone here, I'm sure, has seen a kid get handed a balloon and then they let go and then it flies up and the kid is crying and then the balloon lands somewhere that it shouldn't. So I'm not trying to penalize the toddler, I'm just trying to prevent that scenario from ever happening in the first place because by using this regulation, it would set a cultural norm, and I know that the vast majority of our population is law-abiding. So if we could just never be in the situation of a kid holding on to a lighter-than-air balloon, that would be ideal. So when I'm talking about tributes, these are what I'm talking about, these sort of mass balloon releases for weddings, for funerals, for graduations. It's really pretty in the moment, but what you never hear talked about is all these balloons go up and then they get melted when they get too close to the sun or the atmospheric pressures cause them to explode. Then they fall down and they land in the ocean. So plastic, or the ocean or the environment. So plastic balloons land in the environment and animals are drawn to them because of their pretty colors and the ribbons, and they can eat them, so ingest them, which can, they can get tangled up in their intestines or they can starve because there's obviously no nutritional value in plastic, so they have the sensation of fullness and then they'll just starve to death. Or they can become entangled in the balloons, like the bird that I got from the NOAA website. In a 2006 study by Oceana, over 40 species of marine animals whose stomachs were surveyed contained traces of balloon material. Eighty-eight percent of the species were endangered. Hundreds of thousands of marine animals die each year due to plastics and balloon debris because of the, you know, the ribbons is 32 times more likely to kill seabirds than other types of debris. And even if the balloons are not ingested or they end up wrapped around something, they break down into microplastics which pollute land and waterways, and as we all are familiar with, they will never leave our ecosystem. Additionally, the aluminum coating on mylar balloons is flammable, so if it comes into contact with telephone wires, it can start electrical fires. And even if, in the low chance that balloons are properly disposed of, they will just end up in landfills, they're single-use plastics that, you know, only last a couple weeks. Helium is non-renewable, like I said before, and is mined through drilling and fracking, which is damaging to the environment, and balloons are wasteful consumption of this product. This is a photo taken by Dr. Anna Michelle's lab. She works at HOE. This is 2.3 miles deep in the Gulf of California. You can see that's a zebra on the balloon and it might say it's a girl or something on it, and there's the pink ribbon, but just this is not a localized problem. If we're, if we pass this initiative, we're not just cleaning up our backyard, we're cleaning up the entire earth. Who else? So there've been 10 statewide bans and five towns in Massachusetts have banned the sale or release. The ones that are in bold have banned the sale and release, the other ones have just banned the release. So California, Chatham, Nantucket, and Provincetown are the legislature that I'm trying, trying to like reflect in mind. As you can see, here's a map. The eastern seaboard has done a pretty good job. All the red stars are states that have passed legislation. Massachusetts, it would be really great if we could add another red star. As you can see, like states like Tennessee and Florida have also passed this, so it's not necessarily a red state versus a blue state issue. I think if Florida can do it, Falmouth should be able to as well. Also, here's just the Massachusetts map. So as you can see, towns on Cape Cod are doing a really good job of spreading this initiative. Falmouth is sort of in a sweet spot, whereas we don't have to be the first, but we have a chance to be part of progress in the right direction. It would be really great to see Falmouth join this movement of environmental conservation. So how would this impact Falmouth? I contacted Celebrations and Vows to ask them about their balloon sales, and both of them responded very quickly and said, "We no longer sell them. I can't figure out how to update the website." I was like, "Great." So no non-small businesses in Falmouth sell helium balloons. The only businesses that would be impacted that I'm aware of are Stop &amp; Shop, Michael's Shaw's, Windfall, and Dollar Tree. As all of you are familiar, these are multimillion-dollar companies whose yearly revenue is fairly small. There are many fewer vendors in Falmouth than of plastic water bottles or nips, which we passed and have not had a huge impact on like life in Falmouth. So this would probably even be even smaller than the plastic bottle ban or the nip ban. Most likely wouldn't impact anyone greatly. I met with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee multiple times. I have the support of Chair Alan Robinson, who's seated here tonight, and I've had a couple articles in the New York, not in the New York Times, hello. In the Falmouth Enterprise, and there was a letter of support written by a scientist at SCA. Any questions?
Questions?
What took you so long?
Mr. Zelinski, did you have a question?
Two things. I have a question and a comment. How long did it take you to prepare for this presentation?
I've been working on this initiative since September, but like the physical slides I made for the Democratic Town Committee meeting a couple weeks ago.
You have the ease about you when you are addressing the public that is refreshing for someone your age, and I cannot wait for town meeting to see you give this presentation.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other? Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
I was just going to say, I like it. It's a great idea and I'm glad you got around to it.
Thank you.
Very thoughtful.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Well done. Okay, we're going to move on to business number three, discuss and consider establishing a building committee to complete the planning and design phase of a building committee to complete the planning and design phase of the new East Falmouth Branch Library through the Massachusetts Public Library Construction Program. And I believe Brian Stokes is here. Thank you, welcome.
Very difficult act to follow there.
Yes, it is. Could, could I just stop for one second and ask you to send me copies of your slides? Please, thank you. Go ahead.
Sure.
Okay. If you'd send them to the select board, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
So a few weeks ago, we got great news that we were awarded a planning and design grant through Massachusetts Public Library Construction Program. We applied for this grant last May. It was a very long process. It was a competitive grant. We were one of 15 out of 22 municipalities in the Commonwealth to receive this grant. So the first part of this is that we need to establish a building committee or an advisory committee to work on, with the OPM, or actually hire the OPM, or the owner's project manager, and an architect, and move through the process of planning and designing a new library for East Falmouth to replace the current East Falmouth Branch Library. So we are here tonight to discuss that. We hope to convene a committee of five, and there's more information, I believe, in your packets that gets down to the details of it. But this committee is really just responsible for issuing the RFP for the OPM and for the architect working with those two individuals, and then, you know, getting the, the design of the building to where it needs to be to submit it for review in December with the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners.
Great. Any questions or comments? Go ahead, Ms. Goldstone.
Yeah, I wonder if either you, Mr. Stokes, or Town Manager can clarify the difference between a building committee and an advisory committee. Both terms are used at various points in discussing this particular committee.
I'll take a shot of that. Just kidding. So, yeah, we, there, this is a building committee. That's sort of the general term. We perhaps could have made the, the term of the committee, East Falmouth Library Building Advisory Committee, that's, that's the lengthy term that we've used for the charge. And that lengthier term probably, you know, gets at all of the issues that we need to get at. It's a building committee, and we like to use the term advisory to make it clear to all parties what the role is, as further detailed in the, in the charge document that you have, which is to say, you know, for procurement matters, the recommendations are going to the Town Manager. And then for policy-level decisions such as, you know, site selection and design, the recommendations are going to the Library Board and the Select Board. So it's just, it's just a clarification of what we mean by the term, you know, what's, what are, what are the responsibilities and authority of the, of the committee, and that's why we use, insert the term advisory.
Mr. Brown?
Are you recommending Town Manager-appointed working group type of committee, or a regular meeting committees appointed by this board?
So I believe it does need to be a board appointed by the Select Board because it's going to be making recommendations to the Select Board, to the Library Board, potentially the Town Meeting. So, yeah, I do, I do think it needs to be appointed by this.
Public posted meetings and all. That'll be good because then the public can be more involved. Thank you.
I would motion to approve the establishment of an East Falmouth Library Advisory Committee to complete the planning and design phase of a new East Falmouth Library, and to approve the opening of the application process for the committee as presented.
I'd second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Ms. Goldstone?
Not to harp on the name, but it's a building advisory committee in the title. It's an advisory committee in the, so just getting consistent on that terminology in the charter would be terrific.
Yeah, and I, that's, that's my oversight. So if you, I mean, I think either term is acceptable, but if you, if you wanted, you know, perhaps the most clear one is the one that's on the title of the, of the charge. So it's East Falmouth Library Building Advisory Committee.
So amend the motion, Ms. Goldstone?
Yes, please, to, to establishment of an East Falmouth Library Building Advisory Committee.
Perfect, perfect. And would you second that as well, Mr. Brown?
Yes, I would.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I think that's a really good point amongst the board. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move into discuss and consider drafting a letter to the governor outlining the town's concerns with the closure of the Cape and Islands Community Mental Health Center. Mr. Wrench, I'm going to throw that over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you all know, there's been a lot of coverage lately in the media, in the press, with regards to the proposed closure of the Cape and Islands Community Mental Health Center located in Pocasset. Governor Healey, last month, announced as part of her planned reductions in budget to the, to the Department of Mental Health fiscal year budget, this proposed cut or closure. The center is the only state-run mental health facility and one of the only two inpatient psychiatric units located on Cape Cod. The closure of this facility would eliminate 16 beds, which represents nearly half of the Cape Cod, of the Cape's total inpatient capacity. And Madam Chair, Select Board, the only other inpatient unit located on the Cape is located in Hyannis, and this facility serves folks aged 16 and older. Only has 20 beds, and patients typically stay for five to 10 days. I passed out copies, I think everybody should have copies, of the media release from the Barnstable Assembly of Delegates, Cape Cod Regional Government Assembly of Delegates, press release dated February 6th, and this is following the Assembly of Delegates' proposed Resolution Number Four, which I think very clearly outlines some of the major concerns. So the, the purpose of tonight's agenda item is to have a discussion, get direction from the Select Board whether the Select Board desires that a letter or perhaps a resolution be generated to be sent in opposition to the proposed closure of the mental health facility located in Pocasset.
I would be strongly in favor of that.
Yeah, I mean, I hesitate to have a resolution that we had to wait two weeks more before we get this, get this out. So I'd go for a letter as opposed to a resolution.
I know Sheriff Buckley recently, within the past week and a half, I believe, is in, covered in the Cape Cod Times, I believe, generated a letter that I think also very articulately captured the major points and the, the value and the importance of this facility to the Cape.
Not to mention the jobs that eliminates, right? The staff there that are impacted by that as well, I would imagine, right?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't have the staffing numbers, but it certainly would have an impact.
And, and I reached out to the, our Director of Human Services and asked the same question, and she strongly opposes closing it, and also talked about the, the longevity of care and the coordination of care that, that this mental health center was a very big part of. And I think we need to get a letter out quickly and very strongly.
And the one thing I didn't see really highlighted in those other letters, which were well done, is the fact that our first responders are dealing with the overflow of this already.
Yes.
And that's only going to exacerbate the problem. And it's going to cause us to need more staff, you know, and it's not really their role.
I would also be strongly in favor of a letter. I do think, obviously, we're, we're joining a large and growing and vocal chorus, which I think is a good thing. I do think with this being the only state-run mental health facility, that, to the extent that we can really make the case for why this unique situation is, is warranted and needed for our region, that would, that would be good in that, that letter. And would also just note that this came up at the Human Services Committee meeting last week. I know that multiple committee members are planning to attend the event tomorrow night with the goal of providing any, you know, insights or information from that meeting that might be useful to the, the town in formulating our position as well.
Mm-hmm. You know, the fact that we have had to put these clinicians in place at our own expense just highlights the fact that the need is already not being met, and to take away services at this time is really unacceptable.
I'll just add that there is also a petition online that Senator Fernandez's office has posted with respect to people being able to sign that petition online. And I was also told last night that there's a planned rally at the Bourne Traffic Circle this coming Friday as well. I think 3:00 in the afternoon, I was told. So certainly, as far as I'm concerned, I'd make a motion. We're ready.
Could I, could I add one more thing? I was actually looking for my email. I wanted to just quote something from that email, if you would just give me, just, one of the things that, one of the most important things I felt as though our Human Services Director said was, "Having a local mental health hospital that we can coordinate care for some of our most vulnerable mentally ill residents is vital." She talks about people who need to access these resources with our Falmouth Police Department, school-aged children. It was vital that they be placed locally for the least disruption of their families. That's why we need a regional place, and we need this place to remain.
This gentleman here has a public comment.
Yes, I don't typically take public comment on business items, but we'll take it this time. And then, Mr. Muscally, you can move forward. I just needed to.
Good evening. My name is Alden Cook, and I am a retired firefighter paramedic from the Fire Department after 29 years of service. I do not believe that the citizens of the community or other communities on Cape Cod realize the seriousness of this matter. The first responders, of which, of course, I was one, spend an enormous amount of time dealing with problems of people who have psychiatric, emotional, schizophrenic problems in their lives. It's very, very prevalent, and a great deal of time is spent in trying to assist these people and to get them to the proper facilities. If Pocasset closes, we are left essentially wide open in this and all the other communities on Cape Cod. Yes, Hyannis Hospital has some place to put adults, but for young people, the next stop is Boston, and that's not a viable alternative for the citizens of Cape Cod. It's not a problem that can be dealt with by families or by the police. It needs trained professionals in mental health. So I can't urge you folks as the Select Board and for the citizens of this community to do anything except support wholeheartedly the motion to not have this institution closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate that. Mr. Muscally?
So, Madam Chair, I would move that we direct the Town Manager to draft a letter to the Governor to be signed by the Chair outlining the town's concerns with the closure of the Cape and Islands Community Mental Health Center. As we have discussed this evening, I have complete confidence in Mr. Wrench, or being able to draft such a letter. Do we, do we want the letter to come? Do you want to sign the letter, Madam Chair?
I, I'm fine with that, if, if that's the will of the board.
Yeah, that would be my motion.
Could we, could we also copy that to our local legislators? Yes.
Certainly. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move into the update on the urine diversion feasibility study. Mr. Johnson Staub?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We thought this would be an opportune time to update the board and the community on the status of the feasibility study, the urine diversion feasibility study. The board will recall the Town Manager appointed a, a working group, and the representatives on that working group include Kim Comart as a representative of the Freshwater Pond Committee, Steve Leighton as a representative of the Water Quality Management Committee, and myself. We then, this board then approved a, an intermunicipal agreement with the Massachusetts Alternative Septic System Test Center, Mastech, of the Barnstable County. That agreement outlines a scope of services and $80,000 in compensation to provide those services. And the, the working group and Mastech have been meeting regularly, and there's been a lot of progress made on the feasibility study. At this point, I think the, the biggest takeaway is that it is more, it's going to take longer, and it's going to be more complicated than initially anticipated to get the required approvals from the Massachusetts Plumbing Board and the Department of Environmental Protection in order to be able to launch a urine diversion solution or technology as part of the town's water quality management plan. So I'll, I'll just, that, that's sort of the, the primary theme that I wanted to hit. We have Brian Horsley from Mastech is here with us tonight to answer questions. The, just to give you a little bit more detail on, on why, what the process looks like, starting with the plumbing board. So what we have learned is that it, it's really going to need to be the manufacturer that leads the application, submits and pursues the application with the plumbing board in order to get approval for urine diversion fixtures. That's not to say the town cannot play a role. So our challenge now is to find a partner, see if we can interest that partner in filing an application, and then supporting them through that process. So that's, that's one of the pieces that's proving more time-consuming than we had anticipated. And it is different, the devices that, that we are looking at to be installed in order to control where the urine goes and to, and to use it for fertilizer, and to, to know exactly what's going into the ground versus what's being removed from the property. It's not a composting toilet that we're proposing, because that's not as controlled an environment. There is leachit from a composting toilet. And, and a composting toilet has been approved, wouldn't require any plumbing board approval, as I understand it. And then the DEP approval, Earl referenced earlier, there, it, it looks like it is going to be a process with as many as six iterations of review in order to get the Department of Environmental Protection to approve the entire, the fixture, the collection and the disposal system, the process for that collection and disposal system. So that's going to be a lengthy DEP approval process. And then how exactly it, to design a feasibility study that provides data that is reliable for forecasting in a regulatory environment is another challenging aspect of this project. So what I mean by that is, we could have a project with volunteers who are enthusiastic supporters of this, and they might choose to use a portable urine diversion fixture or even a permanent one at a certain level of, of use, right? But then if you take that same technology and you use it in the context of a regulation where you say, everyone who has a house in this geographic area must install either a urine diversion fixture or an IA fixture, and if you say, well, you only have to install one fixture, you can have other traditional fixtures, we're not going to be able to take a pilot project that's voluntary with only one of multiple fixtures being urine diversion and reliably be able to know how much urine is going to be diverted by a non-voluntary group in a regulated environment.
And even then, if I could, it's still going to have to be some sort of follow-up to make sure that it's actually being captured.
Correct.
You could have angry people that are, you know, not happy that they were forced to implement this and not actually use it to its best performance.
Exactly, exactly right.
That's another hurdle that follows down the line.
Right. So I, I don't want to portray this as a lost cause by any means. So, you know, it is potentially a much lower-cost approach to achieve nitrogen reduction. We've talked on the working group and with Mastech about a couple of different ways that it could be incorporated into the town's water quality management plan. One of those would be not in a mandatory environment. So outside of those geographic areas that the water quality management is looking at for requiring IAs, outside of those but within an impaired watershed, on a voluntary basis, there is a way to actually measure the amount of nitrogen being removed and credit it in a manner similar to the way we have oysters as part of our water quality management plan. But it, it's a different use and has a different implication, and, you know, we might, we might want to pursue both of those on different timelines.
If I could just, I think eventually, everybody in the watersheds are going to have to do some sort of IA. I think eventually, everybody in the watersheds are going to have to do some sort of IA or hopefully this could be an alternative, because when people are faced with replacing... ripping up their whole yard and spending 35 to who-knows-50,000 by the time we get around to it, or doing this, which is going to be a fraction of the cost, this is going to be much more appealing all of a sudden, even if people aren't really flocking to it now. When the money comes around, they're going to say, "Maybe it is a good idea."
Go ahead.
Yeah, similar... In a similar vein, a couple of clarifying questions. I mean, when you're saying in a mandatory environment, it was my understanding that what would be mandatory is some sort of steps to reduce nitrogen and that the goal was to get urine diversion to be one of those options alongside IA. Are you saying the goal is to get to a point where this would be the only option available to... In a mandatory environment?
No.
No.
No, exactly right. If we can get provisional use approval and if we launch a feasibility pilot... Sorry, launch a pilot project that demonstrates that, you know, the amount of nitrogen removed is consistent with our watershed permit targets, then yes, urine diversion could be one of the solutions applied in that regulatory environment where there are geographic areas where nitrogen mitigation is required.
And with regard to the Plumbing Board and the DEP approvals that need to be secured, Plumbing Board is for, I don't know, safety usability, right? DEP is for purposes of understanding if the technology actually does what we need it to do in terms of nitrogen. Does every different version, every different fixture that could possibly be used for urine diversion need to secure both of those approvals to be usable?
For the Plumbing Board, yes. For the DEP, I'm not sure. Do you want to speak to that, Brian?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. I'm Brian Horsley from the Mastech Septic Test Center. I've been working with Peter on this project, and I believe Peter's right. You know, I think each individual toilet fixture itself would need its own approval, and typically, that's led by the manufacturer of those toilet fixtures to go to the Plumbing Board and get that fixture approval. And you're right, that's usually based on safety, you know, making sure the toilet's not going to tip over or break when somebody's sitting on it, essentially, making sure that it's not going to clog or spill or anything like that. The DEP approval, on the other hand, is sort of looking at the whole... I'm sorry, the other approval of the whole plumbing system by the Plumbing Board is looking at that whole, you know, pipes and storage tank basically in the basement. So that would be sort of a standard-approved plumbing and storage system, separate from the fixtures themselves.
Backflow prevention and all kinds of stuff that weren't originally thought of.
Right.
Is there any United States manufacturer showing any interest in this?
Yeah, there is one, yeah. American Standard has shown interest and are in the design phase of a urine diversion toilet fixture right now.
Oh, good.
So that's very promising.
Because the European ones don't seem to be what we're used to.
Yeah, yeah. Identifying a fixture has proven more challenging than we initially thought. You know, the majority of urine diversion fixtures are, you know, European-made, like you mentioned, and one of our first steps was reaching out to those different manufacturers and asking for whatever testing documentation they might have from the EU standards that we could then supply to our Massachusetts Plumbing Board. And it's surprising how little good testing data we've been able to locate. So that's, you know, availability of data is really helping us select which fixtures are best for the project.
Go ahead.
Have there been any conversations with American Standard? It would seem that they would want a willing partner to help them get through the initial phases of building a market for their product.
Yeah, I actually met a representative from American Standard down in Orlando last spring when I was down there at a plumbing code hearing, actually trying to get some urine diversion language in the International Plumbing Code, and they were very excited to see us there and had already been thinking about, you know, designing this urine diversion fixture. So we're regularly in touch with them. My understanding is that fixture is still in the design phase, so I don't know exactly when it'll be, you know, ready for distribution, but it's good that it's happening either way.
Yeah. Hopefully, the timing will work out, and we can consider it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
One more question?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Just in terms of the additional scope, the additional stakeholder meetings, is there a particular purpose or particular topics that you feel need additional outreach?
So in that... In this context, the stakeholder meetings is essentially the working group meeting with Mastech to work through the scope of services. So, you know, it's all of those pieces. And, you know, ultimately, you know, we needed the Plumbing Board approval and the DEP approval, and then we have some policy decisions to make about how the pilot project would work, what that agreement would look like between the town and the homeowner. That all needs to be detailed in a letter so that we can then go out to community members and say, "Is this..." You know, not just the concept of urine diversion, but specifically, "Here are all the details. Here's what you would install. Here's, you know, what the town can, you know, will pay for if we can get over that hurdle of being able to pay for it, and here's what your responsibilities would be. Are you interested in doing this, or are you not interested in doing this?" So that's what we're referring to by stakeholder meetings.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Should we consider sending a letter of interest to American Standard and say, you know, "We're interested to know how far along you are. We understand that you've been doing it, potentially designing a urine-diverting toilet, and we're trying to do a urine-diverting project here in Falmouth, and we'd like to know if there's any hope of getting a fixture anytime soon."
I mean, you know, I think Brian has initiated that dialogue. I don't think it would hurt to, you know, have a letter perhaps from the town manager just reinforcing that, yes, the town is interested in pursuing urine diversion. It's, you know, we want to be a little bit careful, right, because we haven't committed to going ahead with that project yet. It's... We're still on feasibility.
No, but just say that we're interested to learn what the status is, if any such products should be available anytime soon, so we, you know, maybe could know better what to plan.
Yep.
And that could also come from the working group. That interest could come from the working group.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to move on to... This goes right along with it. Discuss and consider approval of the amendment to the intermunicipal agreement with the Massachusetts Advanced Septic System Technology Center of Barnstable County for services related to urine diversion feasibility study.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So to date, we have expended about $50,000 of the $80,000 under the agreement with Mastech, and we have identified another $33,000 of services for additional work to be done in order to really answer these threshold questions of, is the pilot project viable or not? So we are seeking the Board's support to amend and extend the intermunicipal agreement with Mastech of Barnstable County for that purpose. And I think attached... The documents may be a little bit out of sequence. Attached to Business 5, you have the updated scope of work, and that will be the attachment... Would be the attachment to the amended intermunicipal agreement if the Board is so inclined to approve it.
So let me just repeat. The original agreement authorized $80,000, and we've spent $50,000.
Correct.
Okay.
And we're anticipating there's another $33,000 on top of that that will be needed in order to complete the feasibility study.
And can I just ask, the scope of the work for the initial agreement is approximately 65% complete. Why is it only 65% complete?
Because, you know, for a variety of reasons. One is, as I alluded to earlier, the Plumbing Board approval is taking a lot longer than we had anticipated, and then there are some elements of the scope of work that are dependent on that. So in order to... One of the elements of the scope of work is drafting that letter that would go out to potential participants, and until we have the Plumbing Board approval, we know what the fixtures are, we know what the cost is, we can't really finalize that letter. So there are some interconnected pieces.
Anything else besides the Plumbing Board approval? Are there any other holdups in terms of getting the first... The original agreement and the scope of that work up to more than 65%? What else besides the Plumbing Board approval?
Well, the toilet itself, right?
So let's... Sorry, just paging through real quick. So the participant agreement we talked about, the toilet fixture is again...
Is again an approval.
Yeah, that's the approval issue. The approval of the monitoring plan, that's what was mentioned. So that... Well, that one is... We have said that the initial scope for the DEP investigation is complete, but then there's... We don't have the approval yet because that process is just a lot more extensive than had been anticipated at the time.
Engage a plumbing engineer to design that system.
I'm just thinking that why would we enter into an agreement knowing that these things couldn't be done in that amount of time? That's all I'm concerned about, is that we didn't have sort of the foresight to say, you know, this is never going to happen in the time of this, that we have created the...
So let me take a shot. So I'm no expert in this area, but I was involved in some of the initial discussions with Mastech and with Peter, so I can say this, and it's been alluded to. This is cutting-edge and innovative in a lot of regards and hasn't been done, so we quite honestly miscalculated the length of time. So what this would do, if approved by the Select Board tonight, would give us that additional month to complete the study, feasibility study. I'm going to put somebody on the spot, because one of the concerns I had is, I feel it's important imperative that we're in position going into November 2025 Town Meeting to have these questions answered. So will this extension get us to that? What's the confidence level? And Brian, I know I'm putting you on the spot, because... And to answer the Chair's question, you know, why did we miss it? Because we underestimated the length of time, the complexities and the issues with gathering data, like Brian mentioned earlier. You know, we thought perhaps we had a data set that was available from the EU, and it wasn't as available as we thought initially. So it slowed us down.
It's really out of our control. I mean, it's a goal to chase after, but we don't know that the Plumbing Board is ever going to approve it.
Right.
And they might partially approve something with conditions that aren't reasonable, and we don't know. We don't know what they're going to do.
I just think we have to be careful with contracts and agreeing to something in a contract, and then, oh, well, we need more money because we're going to get it done in the time. I just think we need to be careful of that.
Honestly, I wouldn't... I wouldn't be surprised if this comes back again for another extension, because it's... We're going where people haven't gone before.
I've been following up on...
Mr. Muscally?
Thank you. Following up on your comment, I think, as I understand it, this is... We're hoping this is ready by September 1, 2025, yet the agreement has an end date in and of November of 2025. Why don't we make the end date September 2025 if that's the date we're looking for?
Yeah, that's a good question, and that actually was deliberate, because there's one deliverable that's called out for delivery after September 1, which is Investigation and Funding Sources and expanding the geographic area, meaning finding other towns that might be interested in joining the pilot project. You know, realistic... That's something that I can anticipate at this point, that is not likely to be wrapped up and completed by September 1. So I wanted to anticipate and put that in there. But all of the other deliverables, we have a target date of September 1.
Okay. Ms. Goldstone?
I would like to go back to the question of confidence of being able to do the work that is stipulated by September 1, especially given that one of the complications that was surfaced in this initial phase, as you started off by saying, Mr. Johnson Staub, is that the manufacturer needs to lead the Plumbing Board filing, not us.
Mm-hmm.
And as Mr. Brown just said, there's an aspect of this that is out of our control. So how confident are we that we can actually get to the point that we want to be at by September 1?
Well, I wouldn't be honest if I said I'm 100% confident that we'll be ready by September 1, but I guess what I will say is, you know, backing up what everyone else here said, or, you know, a few of us said, that, you know, this is a really novel path that we're on here. We're definitely breaking new ground. So, you know, when we signed the initial agreement, you know, we didn't really know, you know, everything that we needed to know, you know, like, you know, what approval we were going to need with DEP, exactly what we're going to need with the Plumbing Board. So over, you know, the past, you know, eight months or so, we've learned a lot, and, you know, we've... I feel like we've now cited the targets that we need to hit, and we actually have at least one plumbing... One toilet manufacturer who is... Who we are working through the process. We're basically trying to facilitate the process with that manufacturer. So, you know, I do feel confident that we know what we need to do and that, you know, we will be successful moving through that. So that's kind of the best I can give. You know, we didn't know as much when we started, and we know a lot more now, so I'm a lot more confident that we'll be able to complete the tasks.
If I could just add to that, you know, there was pressure put upon us by other individuals at Town Meeting in terms of getting this done and getting it done quickly. Certainly, I never promised that it was going to be done in time for the last Town Meeting or the Town Meeting before that, and I'm, you know, I'm certainly not 100% confident will, for the very reasons that have been identified, that we're going to complete this by September 1. But, you know, this is an approach, a solution that the community is very interested in. We are working on it diligently and seriously, and if it's not ready, you know, it's not ready. And at some point, you don't keep spending money on it, and at some point, you limit the time that you spend on it, but I wouldn't be honest if I said with confidence, "Don't worry about it, we're going to get it all done this time."
I want to be careful about entering into a contract, knowing that we may not be able to get it done, and that's my only concern. Mr. Brown, and then Ms. Goldstone.
The only thing is that if we don't continue and continue to fund it, we're never going to get there, and there's no guarantee of certainty that it will be done, and there is a chance that this money won't come back to us, because we're investigating something with the hopes that it can be done, but we really don't know. But I still think it's a good investment, because if we are successful, think how many millions of dollars we're going to save for our residents if it's...
We could. We could.
Possibly.
Yeah, possibly. I just... I guess I'm just stuck on entering contracts knowing and signing away that we put an end date of September 1, and it's not going to happen.
Maybe there should be a clause at the... On that date and say that, you know, September 1 or reconsidered by the Select Board. I mean, it's a potentially... We know that it's a possibility that it might not be.
So are we prepared to extend it again?
I am. As long as it's not crazy.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, as of September 1, let's say, the contract is September 1. They come back and they say, "No, we need three more months."
The contract says November 2025.
Okay, but we talked about changing the date because of Town Meeting in November. Am I correct? Mr. Renshaw, you...
There's an element in this extension that is outside the scope of these approvals. It has to do with...
If you want to stay with the November 2025 date in the agreement.
In the contract, but you're saying...
That's what I would recommend.
You want it September 1.
That was my...
Is that what I heard?
That was my direction. I want it in time for November Town Meeting.
For November Town Meeting.
I want answers to those...
Yes.
That is the goal.
And if it... What I'm saying is, if it doesn't happen by, let's say, November, because that's the contract, is this Board willing to then say, "Okay, we'll do another three months for another $30,000?" That's my concern, and I just want it on record.
I would be... Well, I don't know the dollar number.
Who knows what we'll vote in, you know, when it comes up?
I hope it's a lesser dollar number and more of a timeframe issue.
I guess it's the principle of just extending it again is my issue. Mr. Muscally, go ahead.
I mean, I think that problem is probably inherent in every contract you sign that has a, you know, an outside date for performance. Always things happen, storms, no materials, whatever. So, you know, I appreciate your concern, and I think it's a valid one, but I have to agree with Mr. Brown at this time that I think we should move forward. The upside is, you know, is very, very good for the town if it proves to be a...
Do you want to make the motion?
...viable study, feasibility.
I would make a motion to approve the amendment to the intermunicipal agreement with the Massachusetts Advanced Septic System Technology Center...
Want to hear any from the public?
...of Barnstable County for services related to a urine diversion feasible study as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there something you'd like to say that would change the motion?
Uh, well, no.
Okay.
Not change the motion, but to string the...
Okay, but we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Four to one. It passes. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. I will go through each consent agenda item, and if you would like to hold it, please notify me as the Chair. Licenses. Consider a vote to approve the application for a special one-day wine and malt beverage license, Main Street Gallery, 189 Main Street, Friday 2/13/25 from 4:30 to 7:00.
Hold, please.
Okay, thank you. Administrative orders. Consider a vote to approve a request for a variance to the Sign Code 184-30, Special Events, St. Barnabas Church, 91 Main Street. Consider a vote to approve letters to be sent to Governor Healy and state legislators regarding proposed change to the septic tax credit. Consider a vote to approve... Consider a vote to approve a waiver of the town permit fees for the Falmouth Housing Trust five-unit affordable housing development, four-nineteen Wacoit Highway.
Okay, I'll move this consent agenda with the exception of Item One, held by Mr. Muscally.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, back to licenses. Mr. Muscally, you held this.
Yeah, with respect to the application, I just need to abstain from, from a vote, as I am a member of the Board of Knopsculite, for which the event on February thirteenth is to benefit, so I will abstain from voting.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the license under the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, move to approve an application for a special one-day wine and malt beverage license for the Main Street Gallery, one-eighty-nine Main Street, for an event Friday, February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, four-thirty to seven P.M.
Okay, any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Four.
Anybody second that?
Second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Sorry. I got a motion and a second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there are four with one abstention. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the minutes. Review and approve, and vote to approve the minutes of meetings, public session, January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five.
Move to approve the minutes with two amendments.
Perfect.
Page two, under announcements, should read SOUP, spelled S-O-U-P-er, Bowl Sunday fundraiser. And on page eight, under Item Thirteen, spelling of Brayton Point should be corrected at all points to be B-R-A-Y-T-O-N.
Great, thank you. Anything else from any other board members? Any other corrections or edits?
I found the minutes to be very well done.
Okay.
And timely.
So I will entertain a motion to approve with the two edits from Ms. Goldstone.
Move. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. All right, Town Manager's supplemental report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No supplemental reports tonight.
Oh, okay. Select Board reports. Yes?
Along with yourself, Madam Chair, and Mr. Brown, had the opportunity last week to attend a workshop hosted by the Resilient Woods Hole Group. I want to thank and commend the town manager for asking so many town staff to also spend their mornings on that task. It was, it was a significant dedication of effort, and I think very worthwhile. A lot of work, a lot of great presentations, kind of bringing those of us who haven't been intimately involved with the, the project, up to speed on where things are, and then some really good conversations about priorities and how we actually move forward toward greater resilience. So it was a, it was a really great workshop, and, and really appreciate everyone's time there.
It was really incredibly interesting and so far out of my wheelhouse that it was great to learn a lot of new.
Good to learn about what's actually happening in, in Woods Hole, and all the knowledge that they're bringing forth towards working on it.
Any other, Mr. Muscally?
Very quickly, Madam Chair, I did attend the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee meeting on February fifth, and I just want to report that there was considerable discussion about the recent fatality at the corner of Dillingham and Gifford Street, and the request that we'll be going to the Traffic Advisory Committee with respect to some improvements of that intersection to, to, to solve some of the problems that, that have been longstanding at that, at that particular location. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I get to meet on a Zoom call with Mr. Senator Dylan Fernandez to talk with him and Jonathan Kaufman and Stephen Rafferty about the proposed, potentially proposed legislation for changing the septic tax credit to be refundable. And they were very interested and asked a lot of good questions, and they seemed to be very supportive, so I thought that was a good meeting.
Great. Ms. Zelensky?
I had every intention last meeting to announce the fact that I'm not seeking reelection. Unfortunately, I had some dental surgery that I had to take care of, Doug sick Devon on me, so I kind, it kind of leaked out. But it was never my intention. I, I feel like I owed the board, you know, this announcement prior, and I will not be giving any indication of what my future plans are until my commitment to this board and the town is done upon, I think it's incumbent on me to finish the job that I was voted in for before I make any kind of announcement. Devon, I'll, I'll find you when that comes, all right? Thank you.
Well, we're going to miss you guys.
Absolutely.
It'll be a big change.
No, you're not.
I'll be around, trust me.
Come on. I have a couple of things. I did go to the Super Bowl, and I'm glad you corrected the spelling on that, because the soup was great, it was a great gathering, I think they had over a hundred people, and it was, it was just wonderful at the Jewish congregation Saturday, last Sunday. I want to remind all Select Board members that we have a March first workshop. It's going to be a busy one. We have some big items to tackle. And then, lastly, I'm going to ask Mr. Muscally and Ms. Goldstone about an update on the Select Board Handbook.
We've talked about it. I've had a couple of reservations, but we'll, we'll get you.
Let me know. Okay. And if there's anything else that you want on that agenda for March first, it's pretty full right now. We need to talk about a land acknowledgement policy that was sent, and I will get that out to you so that you can review it ahead of time. We need to talk about immigration enforcement, big issues. And I wanted to be able to do it where we could have more conversation and not tie it up into one of these meetings. Mr., what am I missing, Mr. Renshaw? We just talked about it this morning.
So we covered the immigration procedures and policy.
Mm-hmm.
The land.
Land acknowledgements.
Acknowledgements. And there was a land development rights.
Transfer development rights.
Yes.
Transfer development. You know, that Coastal Resiliency workshop made me think about the fact that people in those low-lying areas are going to be looking for relief. I don't know if transfer development rights is something that's going to be, anything that's helpful, but I'd like to know a little bit more about whether or not it could be.
Yes.
YMCA used that, right? We used it, transferred development rights with respect to.
That was for the water.
For the water, yeah.
And also talking about the empowerment bill that has gone to the legislature, and I think the only thing that may come out of that discussion is if we want to send a letter like a lot of other communities have. If there's anything else that you would like to see.
That might be something we could maybe squeeze into a regular meeting?
We could do.
Because it's not, I mean, it's pretty.
We could probably do that on the twenty-seventh.
So the twenty-fourth. I think I had it penciled in based on a discussion for the Select Board meeting on the twenty-fourth.
The Governor's Office is specifically asking for support from communities that would be interested in it.
And, and I'm not sure it's going to be something that we need to spend too much time on.
I agree.
So we might be able to have a draft. There are lots of examples out there.
Right.
If you've read them, it's, they're all attached to that empowerment bill. But if there's something else, Mr. Muscally, you sent me something.
The possibility of, of the feasibility study for moving.